Lord, we come to you with an open heart today, God, and come with you with an open mind, Lord. We pray for our country, Lord, as you lead us through it, Lord, we pray that we turn from horrific ways to turn back to you as a nation, God, that you may guide us, Lord. We pray for your people of Israel, Lord, as they go through the trials and tribulations that they go through, God. God, we pray that you give our council people here wisdom, Lord, and run in this city, as we pray for our president for wisdom, as he runs our country, God. That every citizen that comes across their table, they'll take it with an open mind and an open heart, and seek your wisdom when they need it, and, God, all these things we pray here, so just Christ will be with them.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good, it's good to see everyone out this afternoon, uh, may have a little rain before we get the flipping done and heading home, so, but that'd be good, we need some rain, need some rain. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started, and, uh, I'll just go down, I guess, I guess I got the biggest list today, so I'll just go down on my list. Uh, one of the things that we got going on is Boozer Bridge, and, uh, we've gotta set up the financing for Boozer Bridge, cause they're just about ready to start on it. So, uh, I think someone has, already has that paperwork on them, about getting it set up. Uh, the next thing I have is a, a straight light that we need to install on, uh, Bluffview Drive, uh, it's kind of a dead spot over there, so that'd be good, uh, if we could go ahead and do a straight light over there.
I'll bring that up.
Okay, uh, the next thing is, uh, the tax revenue agreement, uh, the renewal of that. It was already S for a long time, now it's a new avenue, I mean, uh, so it, that's just, uh, changed the name, but it's still the same company, so we'll need to bring that up to, uh, uh, to sign that contract. Uh, the next one is, uh, hosting internally, uh, a job, uh, for a, uh, uh, a, a new, new person at the Westwater Treatment Plant, which will be a great operator. Uh, so, we'll post, post to that for seven days, and, uh, the next thing on my list is, uh, had a sanitation truck driver to resign, uh, effective as Mark Clines, and he, he resigned, uh, October the eleventh. So, we'll take that up tonight.
I'll bring that up.
Okay. Uh, then we got some, uh, land that we gotta pay some money on, uh, I think Bijon's got that, it's on Boozer Bridge, track one, track five, uh, I think he's gonna take care of that. Uh, something that wasn't on the agenda, and we, we're gonna make a motion to, um, uh, to add this to the agenda, was, uh, paving, and we, we, we thought this was already done, but it wasn't. But anyway, Brown's Chapel Road, there's a section down there we're gonna pave, it's about seventeen hundred feet long, uh, and, uh, the amount for that is, uh, thirty-eight thousand dollars, and tri-state paving's gonna do that. The next thing I have is Shallow Ranch Road resurfacing project, and this, Shallow Ranch Road is, um, is kind of a joint effort between Shallow, Rainsville, the county, and, uh, Representative Leadbetter and the state with it, where we all kind of going together to resurface that one road down there, because all of us has a part of that road, so we're going together to do that, so.
I'll bring that up.
Okay.
Do you want me to make a motion to amend, uh, the agenda?
Yes, you can do that when we get to, yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the next thing I have is the hiring of Gerald Mole, uh, he's a full-time sanitation operator, uh, he has CDLs, and he'll be at thirteen seventy-two, starting. The other thing I have is, if this is only personal, uh, promotion of Matt Cooley, uh, to a captain, uh, all of, all of the different, uh, like, you have A, B, and C, uh, shifts, and all of them had a captain on each one, and so this brings them up to a, a captain on there, and that's, uh, this pay will be fourteen oh five.
I'm bringing that up.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, then we'll start down one, that kind of gets through mine pretty quick. Okay.
I got the same thing, Marshall, this.
Right. Ricky, you gonna go for three in a row?
Three in a row?
All right. I would like to say something, uh, Lester's here with us tonight, our county commissioner, and, and maybe he's gonna give us a little bit of a deal, than what we originally talked about a few minutes ago, maybe that's where he showed up, uh, on that Shallow Ranch Road, and, uh, we're gonna resurface, and somebody was talking, I think, earlier, you maybe had that down to about fifty thousand for it?
I wish, sir.
I'm just cutting.
It is a little, a little bit better than what it means to me.
I had ragged a little bit about that, we were cutting up on it earlier.
Okay. But he didn't really, that's it. Please on.
Okay, since everybody left us stuff to meet, so, y'all very ready? First of all, the laboratory, the basement and laboratory's got, uh, a little bit of mowing issue, and water's coming through the walls, and it's desperately need of, uh, cleaning first, and then we're gonna put the dehumidifier there to take care of the problem. There's three prices coming in, and the lowest one is eighteen hundred and twenty-four dollars, so I'm gonna bring that up tonight to, uh, take care of that problem. First thing. Check there, as I go. Uh, we was talking about Shallow Ranch Road resurfacing, uh, like the mayor said, it's a combination of three, four different agencies gonna pay for this, but, uh, the amount for City of Ransville is gonna be less than eighty thousand dollars, so I'm gonna bring that up tonight. Uh, Brown Chapel Road, that's the section that we own, and, uh, I'll measure myself, it's seventeen hundred feet, and tri-state paving's gonna do the paving, and his price is gonna be thirty-eight thousand dollars, so I'll bring that up. Uh, the Boozer Bridge project, uh, there's a couple of more tracks that have to be purchased for the runaway purposes, and, uh, each track is gonna be two thousand dollars, so I'll bring that up to go ahead and purchase these two tracks tonight. Or we can, I think our contract's gonna go to work, I say, uh, first of the month, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna move in first of the month to go to work. Uh, Boozer Bridge financing, uh, right now, we have price from, uh, Scott Kirk's bank, which is first southern state bank, uh, we're gonna borrow five hundred thousand dollars, I believe this is to take care of the, uh, bridge and the future paving, because once the paving, bridge is done, we have to pay around it, so we're gonna set it up about five hundred thousand dollars for eight years with, uh, four percent interest, and, uh, this money is gonna come from that, uh, tax revenue that, that, uh, the government is gonna give us quarterly, so it's gonna take care of that, uh, for the next eight years, we're gonna set aside, I believe it's gonna be about fifty-some thousand dollars, uh, quarterly to pay for it. So, uh, I'll bring that up tonight to go ahead and set this money up, we're not gonna borrow it right now, we're gonna borrow it as we need it, we're just gonna open it up, uh, where, uh, if we need to go get the money, we can go in and get it, so I'll bring that up tonight. I believe that's all I got on my list, I got this other stuff, I got the mayor talk, but, but I'll bring it up on the regular council meeting to, uh, to pass, like hiring the new, uh, sanitation driver, and accepting Mark Clines resignation as of October eleventh. And that's all I got, uh, did you talk about the straight line on Bluffview Drive?
Yes.
Okay, I'll bring that up.
Okay.
That's all I got, sir.
All right.
On the, the financing, uh, you said we was getting fifty thousand dollars a quarter from the government, what is that, what are you talking about? Like, what got up my mind?
You said we was getting fifty thousand dollars a quarter?
Yes, we talked about.
We're just getting like fifty-seven thousand dollars a year?
No, no, no.
Yeah, we're getting, we're, we're getting, uh, what he was talking about is, we're, we're gonna have to put a little bit of money with it to make that payment, it's not like it's gonna make the whole payment, but to stretch it out for that many years, uh, like the first year, we'd probably have to pay about sixty thousand, so, or, or fifty thousand, then the next year will be down just a little bit more than that. The fi- third and final year will be, it will be somewhere around, say, forty thousand dollars that we'll have to pay into it, so we'll, we'll figure that into our budget as we go along to make this payment, as we go along, because that's, that way we can use that tax money, if, if we set this aside to be a, a project that we're having, like using that tax money, that ta- gas tax, then we can get it, we can borrow the money, and then pay it back and use it, and then just put a little bit out of our budget into it, so, that's what we're gonna do. Now, Bijon, I've understood all that, you know, so I'm just kinda explaining.
Okay.
I know there is ninety-four thousand dollars a year comes in as a tax revenue, but, uh, based on the population of City of Ransville. I think, I saw on the website that City of Ransville's gonna be ninety-four thousand dollars a year, so you have to do like that quarterly.
That's not true, not from the gas tax, but go ahead.
Why you say that?
Cause I looked at several statistics, and that's not true.
You want me to bring it up?
I, I just, that is not true.
What is the truth?
I might guess I'm fifty-some thousand dollars a year, but go ahead.
Okay.
I'll just bring the.
All right, uh, while he's looking it up, there it is.
All right, um, I'll be bringing up, uh, to amend the agenda tonight also, and I'll promote Matthew Cooley, he's been here with us for a while at the fire department, and, uh, he's ready to be promoted to captain, I think he'll do a good job, I'm sure he's already been doing a job, so I'm happy to bring it up. Uh, I've got a couple of things I want to bring up and talk about tonight, we've not discussed, um, the first thing is the explorer program for the fire department, and basically what it is, is a umbrella coverage, uh, kinda like the Boy Scouts of America, it's a man-dog coverage, Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'd like for Mulder kinda explain more in detail, since he's the, kind of the brains behind it.
That's fine.
Oh, this is not something new, there are several cities throughout the state, upshores is already doing this, through the county fire association, uh, the fire association, which is made up of the forty-six fire departments in the county, voted to do a county-wide explorers program. Uh, this allows, uh, teenagers to come in at age fifteen, uh, into the explorers program, and be able to do stuff with the fire service in a organized, safe manner. Uh, when they turn eighteen, there's guidelines, everything that they have to buy by, but the, the main purpose for us for this is the fire science program. Uh, this will allow, uh, the kids that are, the students that are in the fire science program to be a part of the fire department, uh, be around it more than just in the class, during pipe set. Uh, it gives us a million-dollar insurance policy, uh, that printed out, that's accessible to you, if you may have any questions on it.
And it don't cost the city anything.
It don't cost the city anything, uh, we've got advisors that will be in place, uh, the association itself paid the post fee to establish the explorers post, uh, the only cost that, that we would have involved in whatsoever would be our thirty-three dollars for advisors, uh, fee to have that in place, uh, we actually use a good structure, we have an XO, we have an advisory board that's gonna consist of someone from the sheriff's department, the DES admin service, uh, myself, we sit on that board through the career tech school system, we've got an advisory board set up, and then, uh, we'll be in the central district, uh, for the layout of this program, and it allows these kids to be able to do, uh, what, what example this is, I've been a part of this, and I never knew that God was gonna lead me in this path of where we're at, but for the last, uh, past two years, before this program, Fire Science even started, I was doing, uh, Explorers Weekend at the Fire Department. Uh, I got asked to come down and do live burn stuff, that's coming up November first, second, third, and that was one of the reasons for us trying to get this explorers post in place, and to do this, cause we wanna take, right now, we got thirteen of the fire science students that are willing to go to the Explorers Weekend, uh, and that allows them to do live fire training, they'll pile off four-story drill towel, all this stuff, and it's all under the explorers program. Uh, the county, and, and the, the county fire association is also helping to sponsor those fees to get them into the, uh, Fire College for the Week. I'm glad I answer any question, I don't wanna take up any more time, and being the neediest God question, I'll be glad to answer anything that I can to find the answer for them.
I believe it'll be a good thing to, hopefully, in the future, help recruit some more volunteers, uh, cause I know the volunteer side is, is hurting, so I think that'll be a good thing, maybe that'll help get some more people in for that. I appreciate if you guys get on board with it. Will they be able to go in, uh, in your training, look up, and do stuff that y'all get to do?
They, the, the, the Explorers Weekend stuff, yes, they get to do a, a tremendous amount of stuff, they are not allowed to be used as firefighters, uh, career volunteers, or anything like that. Now, after they have done six months in the explor program, and they have done the required training in there, then they are allowed to do ride-alongs with the fire department, and they are covered under the Boy Scouts of America blanket insurance policy, and they're allowed, and that's something that, that my vision of what we talked about for the future next year, for the seniors, is, if you're a senior, and you've got all your graduating credits, and through this, having this explorers program in place, those students can come in the last semester of their senior year, and they can be attached with the engine crew, that, that period of time, and they get jo- on-the-job training, this is actually learning for life, even though it's under the Boy Scout policy, it's called a learning for life and job chat, and they will be able to do ride-alongs, uh, with the engine crews, uh, but they have to stay in what's considered, uh, the code zone, they can't be, uh, fighting the fire or doing stuff like that, but they can be operate, be around the truck, get tools, stuff like that, let out, really good resource, uh, for letting them see what it's all about, and, and, uh, maybe some of them watching, watching, but it is a great help for us and all the firefighters in the county, because the last thing you'll do is pick up the piles and put a hose by yourself, or the two or three people that spot the fire, so they can be utilized for load hoes, heavy cleanup after fires, stuff like that, so, uh, everybody I've talked to throughout the state, uh, upshores has got this program, and they have to run the kids off whatever time comes up at night, because they're, they're doing the ride-alongs, and they're there with upshores, and several other departments that like to stay at this.
Thank you.
Uh, the next thing I have is, it's called First Math, it's built with AT&T, it's phone service, uh, you know, I've looked over this several times and kinda weighed the options on it, uh, from what I understand, what I see, um, will save a little bit of money with it, and it'll also allow our first responders to have, um, first, um, priority call for them to call, if we have another disaster like we did back in two thousand eleven or, or whatnot, they'll get the first, they'll be the ones that first get the call out, um, and we can discuss it, talk about it, but from what I understand, last year with, with Verizon, we spent over twenty-one thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. Uh, with this, the proposal, with a credit bill, uh, with a credit of six thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars forty-one cents, the proposal will be nineteen thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars and eight cents, and they'll also, um, credit our phones, each phone that everyone has, they'll buy that phone from them. So, we can, we can talk about it if you want to, or we can bring it up, how you all do it, but there's a little bit of savings there, the main thing with me is really just, uh, personnel, and I believe that the, uh, sewer plant will be on that one as well, Aladdin will be on that as well, cause if something happens down there, then it'll go to call out too, um, and they'll talk about it.
As long as you're saving money, I'm for it.
Well, it's not, it's not all about just saving the money, like I said, most of our things, you can have some.
What's the chief talking about? I, I like it, most of us, the sheriff's department's already using it in the county, uh, they're liking it very well, as a matter of fact, they've kinda gone to it as a priority, a primary use, I'm not ahead of that, but, um, but the, the coverage is good enough that they're, they're using it, they're liking it, so, I, I think it would be a good thing.
Thing I like, one of the things I like about it is the priority on talent, like you were talking about, they don't throttle the internet services that we depend on to run in our cars every day.
Right.
Um, and the push-to-talk radio feature on it, so if you have cell phone signal, you still have radio, whereas some, no matter how good of a radio system you buy, you're gonna have dead spots. But sailors a lot easier to get it, to get around that, and that's another, just a kind of part of the backup.
So, when?
I talked, I talked to the guy this week, uh, actually, I talked to him, Brad, um, and, and it is, it is, uh, it's got some real good features to it, the push-to-talk, uh, the, uh, being able to, uh, be on the network, uh, when everybody else can't be on the network, there's a lot of positives to it, to, to this, uh, I don't think it's, just from me looking at it, I don't think it's cheaper, I think it's, but I think it's probably gonna be something that's gonna be as good or better than we've got now, um, so, you know, after a year's time, you get that credit, the first year, I think after that first year, uh, it's probably gonna be a little bit higher, but, you know, some of the features may outweigh, you know, cost a little bit, so, um, just expect it not to be, cause he told me, he said it's probably not gonna be cheaper, but it's gonna be better in the long run, and so, there's, there's, there's some positives to it, so, just wanted to make sure you understood that, so, but just being cheap.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why I was saying, I mean, I don't know about the money, but.
No, that's right.
My thing is.
Cause, back when we had the toilet, it just come through and pour out there, and you couldn't get out of it, nothing.
I couldn't get out of it.
Yeah.
Public safety and Aladdin will work certain way, cause I mean, they're important too, if something goes wrong, you know, they'll be able to get out.
I believe there's some stuff in there as well for the street department.
Yeah.
I like to be on that system, and the mayor, and, yeah.
All right, so the next thing is, I'll be on the agenda for pay raises, now, I just wanna discuss it a little bit, you guys can discuss it, see what you guys think, I talked to Miss Betty, um, what we was trying to do was trying to, um, adjust the, uh, public safety, how we did the sewer and.
And the public and.
Excuse me, and parks recreation, what I done was I asked her to run a seventy-five cents for our public safety, cause we had a budget surplus of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, or a hundred and three thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars. Uh, after that, the remaining would've been forty-six thousand and forty-one dollars, then I asked her to throw a thirty-five cent raise, uh, for all the other employees, after that, it was gonna come out to be twenty-six thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars, which would allow us to do a one percent raise at the end of the year if we wanted to, and would give us, uh, the balance would be eight thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars. We can discuss that, if y'all want to, uh, I'll try to do a little research, and I know everybody ain't gonna be happy with it, I understand that, uh, but the position that we're in, we gotta try to do something to make it more competitive, in my opinion. Uh, I know we all probably don't agree to it, and that's okay, that's what's great about having this panel, we all have different opinions, uh, you know, in my opinion, uh, I think we should boost these guys up a little bit. Not saying they're not even more important than anybody else, but they are a part of safety. And we're trying to keep it as competitive as possible, so maybe we can slow down people coming in and coming out, and we use this as a training facility. You guys got anything interesting about it, we can talk about it, I got a plan B too.
Yeah, I'd still like to do half, or go across the table, we can go fifty across the table, and that way we're not singling out one department over the other, that's everybody equal in the city. And I don't wanna take back either, because I know public safety is very important, but I also know that our sewer operator, this and that and that, but we did adjust theirs to salary, from hourly to salary.
I think we ought to really do what the state's really doing, is put all, and, and actually, we shouldn't be ashamed of anything that we got on our payroll.
No.
Uh, but I'm in the state, you can go on their website and look, see what each job pays, and, uh, so, really, it needs to be put on there and be addressed, I can't speak for everybody up there, but, uh.
That's a tough one.
I've been a firefighter, volunteer for twenty years, I know that's what enhanced me getting into city government, I don't think anybody else, I'm sitting on this council right now, really realizes what they go through, what they smell like after they've been into a house fire, I don't think anybody understands about what it's like pulling somebody over today, wondering if they're still, you know, I'm sorry, guys, that we can't help our, uh, first responder and our emergency personnel, they protect us always sleeping, they protect our valuables, our properties. Uh, and I said before, if you look, it's no wonder that we've hardened as many firefighters in the public system that we've hardened, cause it's like the revolving door I talked about, you can't pay, somehow from two thousand eight to the day, we got bad behind, you know, when we're paying less than everybody else, don't think you're gonna come to this council meeting without hardening somebody, cause if you get somebody down the road making a dollar higher, two dollars higher than more, you're gonna bet everybody else is today, so, you know, everybody's got their own ideas and opinions, and the president don't make what the governor's making, senators don't make what representatives make, everybody's calculated different situation, but, uh, when you prioritize your town, your emergency personnel are gonna be right to talk to me, because what I've just gotten to say, that's my case.
Marshall? Well, I'm talking most all of you, but, uh, you know, I'm kinda torn on it, I do agree with, uh, Ricky and Derek, that, you know, I feel like we probably underpaid some of the emergency personnel, but I, you know, I concede Brandon's point also. Uh, you know, I guess I was just giving my time, I know that it's come up, that, you know, we have to do this now, I feel like we're, you know, up against it, but, you know, my thoughts forward is, you know, the, let's do, you know, it may take us another couple of weeks, but let's do some race orders, and, you know, if we can, honestly, I feel like the, I definitely agree that, uh, the new hireees, as far as like, uh, uh, just a patrolman and a, just a basic fireman, they're definitely underpaid, now, the salaried guys, you know, I feel like, the thing about that is you get into that, and I talked to, me and Derek talked about this, you know, you get into the salaried people, if, if you give them fifty cents, then you've got somebody like Ricky who's down there, and he's making less than the other salaried people, and, you know, it's, you know, it's kinda dicey on that, so, you know, I definitely feel like the patrolman and the, the other fire department guys should get a raise, but, you know, on the other hand, the other people.
I, I mean, if you guys ain't for bringing this up, I can bring up the three percent raise tonight, we'll have less than fifty thousand dollars left in the budget, and we'll do something different later. I'm all about a three percent raise, let's give you guys something, and then, maybe you guys can come up with a better plan to try to help these people. And then, if, maybe you guys can come up with a better plan to try to help these public, public safety guys out. Uh, I'm, I know I'm your liaison, and I'm gonna try to do a look in for you. Uh, if it don't go through, that's okay, at least we can at least get something tonight. So, I'll bring it up to three percent raise, and then you guys can come up with something to try to help them, uh, raise their pay up.
I've got a suggestion.
Okay.
I know what it was, but, uh, yeah. Why don't we get, how much did you say was surplus?
If we get, it's a hundred and three thousand, sixty-five thirty-three dollars.
Okay, why don't we give everybody three percent raise? And whatever that total comes to is say eighty thousand.
Three percent raise would be, um, fifty-two thousand and one hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Two thousand. So, we can go four percent then. What's four percent will give us?
I don't have that four percent.
But now, if you do that, you gotta consider.
Everything else.
We're gonna adjust some of them lower guys.
The insurance went up four percent. The insurance went up four percent.
What I was gonna say, can I finish what I was gonna say?
Yeah, sorry.
Why don't we give them three percent, three and a half percent, whatever it is, to everybody? And then what's left, give it to responders. Divide that up. It may be three cents, it may be fifteen cents, I don't know. Can we do that?
Can I tell mine?
Your idea's all right. Watch it go.
I, I mentioned this here a while back, I, you know, and I, I think they need all, all, all looking for guilt. And so, I'm, I'm looking at it from the standpoint that if you do a raise, if you do a percentage raise. The people on top gets the most, and the people on the bottom gets the smallest one. So, that's really not the way to go if you're trying to help the people on the bottom, okay? So, if you do, if you do a straight across the board, like what Eric was talking about, seventy-five cents, or seventy-five, thirty-five. That helps probably better than, than most everything. But what I want to do, what I think is just what, is fifty, 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 fifty dollars, uh, fifty cents now. And fifty cents later on, which could be, uh, you know, in the next year somewhere. Then you're gonna get a full dollar, and it, which is straight across the board, a full dollar. It's not like a percentage raise. Percentage raise is not gonna help everybody. It'll help the top, it won't help the bottom. So, my proposal was to do a fifty cents now and fifty cents later on, like maybe, uh, in the fall or next year, when we do our budget. Do another fifty cents. Everybody, straight across the board, fifty cents, and then fifty cents. And, and then, if we've got some money left, we do a percentage raise that can be in the year, and do it that way.
Well, we have enough money to do that, though. That's the question.
It actually works out exactly what yours was.
I'm, I'm going along with that.
So, that was, that's my proposal, um, and so. And, and I, there was some concerns.
Personnel outside.
No, it's not playing them out. They're gonna actually go have a dollar in a year, full dollar, instead of seventy-five cents.
I tell you what I'm gonna be for, is this quick play of politics with it. We talked about having Jacksonville State or somebody do. Yeah, it's gonna cost us money, but on the other hand, you know, we need to go back and put this on the, on the internet. And where everybody's jobs qualifications and stuff is what it is and what they're paying, cause you can look up the state. And you can look up this other cities and stuff, so we need to go ahead and get it where we can have ours on there.
Anybody can say our price scale anytime they want.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's public.
Starts out, cause our price scale, I don't know who's captured it, but, uh.
I can tell you exactly what it is.
What is it?
Bijon made a motion and puts you, Derek, and, uh, Brandon on the committee that come over the price scale. It's seven two thousand seven hundred and ten.
What, we're talking about that?
We get more.
You, you, you like to, you seconded it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, I can, I know what I'm, cause I ain't never been on with me. But I take what, what about this? What about, you know, I'm gonna talk about this, but then. I think Ricky had said that we had to get outside. Me and Derek's been talking. I promised you we would come back to this table in two weeks, and me and Derek and Betty, we'll have something, if y'all will.
I'm good with that.
I mean, I think me and Derek can get, get something worked out.
I'm good with it. I just don't wanna keep dragging it.
No, I understand. I was made it, but I don't want us to lie, you know, this is getting to, I know it's getting to.
But when you, when you, when you get into the percentage raises, you're trying to help that, the lower, the ones that start, I, that's what, you know. It, the percentage rates don't help them as much as it does the top people, so.
Kind of sense. Three percent fifty thousand, a lot better, three percent.
Well, that's what I was saying earlier, you know, I agree that the patrolmen and the regular firefighters are unfired.
Yeah.
But then, if we, you know, you know, I just feel like, I don't know, I just think that, and like Daphne, Tommy, like me and, me and, uh, Derek is talking about. If we had like a step, right, it's just, you know, like after three years, five years, whatever, we real value, wait, how long they been here, if they're doing good. We, you know, give them a raise based on that. And Daphne, Tommy's been here some, like twenty plus years. I mean, uh, you know, the may, they should be making, you know, pretty good money just for the fact they've been here and put in that time.
If you do a step raise program, then it would've given up everybody and then sent it to the state or the city.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Right now, would they have no intention of staying with the city?
I, I a hundred percent agree with that.
It's gonna grow in pains.
Yeah, you gotta figure out how to do it.
Two and a half years ago, we did what we did to try to see what we thought was best at that time, and now we're, so we gotta.
You're exactly right. So, we just gotta fix something. Um.
So, what's your game plan?
We're gonna hold off, or you may, you may bring it up to a percent.
Whatever you want.
Would you have to go along with?
But the three percent is gonna hurt the bottom side.
Well, then we'll come back in two weeks, and we'll have a better plan.
Eric, we gonna, or me and you gonna, is it, is it, we gonna make it?
I'm, I'm gonna do what I can do.
Give us a week.
Okay.
I just don't wanna drag this out any longer than we need to. See the day it's affecting them.
Yep.
If I made the motion, like you said, two years ago, what was it? It was me and Marshall and whoever's?
Bill Marshall. Bill Marshall made a motion to put out a committee, which was Derek, Ricky, and Brandon.
Brandon.
Okay. When did we get to be on?
So, you might want to.
I guess that's pretty basic, you know?
Y'all couldn't have been inside with me?
No. Alright.
Okay, alright.
Alright, next council meeting, I'm gonna have something, we're gonna, we're gonna bring.
We are gonna have some.
And if it passes, it passes. If it dies, it dies. I'll have some numbers, and we'll go from there.
You want you and, you and him?
I, that's.
I mean, if you want them to.
I don't care. Look, it ain't about who it's, it's about doing what's best for them.
That's right.
So, I don't care who I'm with or what I'm in. We're gonna work together and get the job done for them.
I mean, I don't register anything, so I don't want to do that. I mean, no offense, I'm just saying, somebody's might do it slower.
Alright, you through it? You good?
I'm good, I'm there, yeah. I'm gonna hate hers.
One thing I forgot to mention a while ago, we gotta go into executive session for ongoing litigations, and so that'll be the end of it, when we get to the end of the meeting.
And also, before you give a break, uh, I've tried to pull up the chart that I did before my computer. Shows how much city rents we're gonna get based on their population. I'm pretty positive it was ninety-four thousand dollars. I gotta go down somewhere. But right now on my phone, I can't pull it up, but I did pull this up. That the governor agreed to put six percent this year, and eight percent next year, and ten percent the following year. Alright, based on that, in three years, city, I mean, uh, the whole state's going to revenue three hundred and twenty million dollars for, I mean, infrastructures. But, uh, I'm trying to get the formula, how city rents we're gonna get that ninety-four thousand. If y'all give me time, I'll pull it up.
Well, let's, let's move, let me listen to them, we'll talk back to you, right? Chief Smith.
Everything's a little well up the place, department, um, nothing really going on except we're raising money for Shop with the Cop for December. If anybody wants to donate, we'll be accepting donations for that.
Heard the cactus kicking in your tail.
Yeah.
That's what we've heard.
I don't care.
Marshall, get your thing done.
Mayor, can I say something real quick, just real quick? Um, they're doing also, you know, Shop with the Cop, also at school at Plainview. Uh, they're doing a, uh, a food bank with Mr. Rentfro and them over there. So, I encourage you, if you've got some, if you're at the grocery store, and you have a little extra money, buy some canned foods, and try to bring it up there for them. Cause I believe there's thirty-something kids right now. I could be wrong, but they're actually sending food on to. So, if you can help get involved with that, I know Mr. Rentfro and Plainview really appreciate it, so, sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Rentfro.
Well, to me, I, you know, yeah, Kate's probably taking my tail, that's okay, but I'll take a pie to the face. If she, if she raises more money, I'll get pie to the face, so. If that motivates you to give, then so be it.
There you go.
Thank you.
Chief, right.
Everything's good. The fire department, we're just trying to finish our conference session. We'll finish the library, and then we have Plainview at the end of the week. Everything's going good?
Good, thank you, sir.
Everything's good. I'm sure they had the fire department Tuesday, and, and they found out on fall break, you can't let these guys out in the market long for five minutes without drawing fire out. We had a lot of kids just pulling in, just kind of saving trucks, and we appreciate them coming in. Um, we have a Halloween event next Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, at Colton, and I have a show during that.
Thank you. Sammy. Trump retreat coming up in a few weeks.
Trump retreat coming up on everybody there.
October, October, what time? Five to seven, five to seven, okay. Sammy?
Uh, our football program has been really successful this year. Beijing championships are this Saturday at Plainview, starts at twelve o'clock. All three Plainview teams are in it. Uh, come out and support the little bears. If, uh, they win this, they'll be in the Super Bowl. Um, Christmas lights, we're starting getting them ready, um.
They'll be here before you know it.
They'll be up before you know it, cause it's, it's the end of October, and we get them up before Thanksgiving. I've gotta get the dates on the shopping thing. I think they'll wanna get them up before that. And, uh, now that the cost has gotten down, we've got a lot of LEDs now. Cost has went down a lot, so it shouldn't hurt as bad in the month of early. Uh, I was gonna mix in the Trump retreat. If you want to have a place, call Sandy, she'll take care of this.
There you go.
We're helping out a lot, we try to, but, you know, it's better to have one person organized.
We're looking forward to a big year after this year.
Yeah.
Alright, bro. Uh, three minute break.